Okay, this is Joyce Anderson. I am Chair of the Anchorage Election Commission. I'm calling the Election Commission meeting to order. It is 10:31. So if I could have Erica do roll call, please.
Elaine Nelson?
Here.
Cynthia Hawkins?
Here.
Glennis Ireland?
Present.
Jessica Abney?
Here.
Joyce Anderson?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, you have before you, the Commission has before then, the minutes of the May 17th, 2021, Anchorage Election Commission Public Session of Canvas and the adoption of the Election Canvas Report regarding the re-counsel for school board seats B and E races from the regular municipal election of April 6th, 2021. If you want to take a moment to look at that. It should be before you. So this is, this is April 6th. I'm sorry, the minutes of May 17th. Which, which you will see, um... (cough) Excuse me. It's right here. (cough) Okay. Pat, do you have them?
Right here, May 17th.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Pat is moved, is there a second?
Second.
One is the seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, minutes are approved. Okay, the next item is 3B, minutes of the May 21st, Anchorage Election Commission Special Meeting. Those should be in front of you as well. I'll give you a minute to look at them. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Pat is moved, is there a second? Elaine is seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Full business. We have the minutes of the April 20th, Anchorage Election Commission Special Meeting before us. Take a moment to look at that. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented of the meeting of April 20th, 2021?
Sure.
Pat is moved, Elaine is seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries. The minutes of the April 20th, Anchorage Election Commission Special Meeting have been approved. We are now down to new business, which is the reason that we are meeting today, which is the review of the draft of the Title 28 ordinance. So I think what I would like to do is have Erica get the overview of why the changes were recommended, and then we'll go through them item by item. So Erica, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you, you used to have three documents. These were all emailed to you yesterday. Again, I apologize, I didn't get them out sooner. These are the same three documents that have recently been reviewed by the Ethics and Elections Committee, so they are available on the website of the Assembly Ethics and Elections Committee for anyone who may be following along on the phone. They are a draft ordinance. The ordinance has no number yet because it has not been submitted for introduction. There have been no Assembly number, I mean, we haven't talked yet with the Assembly about who would possibly be interested in introducing this, so that's going to be coming up at the October 13th meeting of the Ethics and Elections Committee. There is what we call a crosswalk, which sort of goes through the changes one by one and tries to explain them. This is really just for your reference, not for review. And then the third thing is a draft of a new Observer's Handbook. The Observer's Handbook is adopted as part of one of the sections of code, and I'll point it out when we get to it, and is thus adopted by reference and has the force of law because the Assembly has adopted it. Every year after the spring election and any runoff that may follow the spring election, the staff works with the Assembly Council, the Election Commission, and the Ethics and Elections Assembly Committee to review Title 21 and see whether there are any needed updates. So this is a process that happens each year. You may remember that we did this last year, and... Sorry. You may remember that we did this last year, and there were changes to Title 28 that were adopted in January of this year. It is always more desirable that the changes, if there are going to be any, get adopted before the start of election season, which we generally think of, right, starts right around the beginning of January. So we're a little ahead of last year's schedule this year, so that is really good. And there are only 14 pages to this ordinance, so it's a little, even a little bit shorter than last year's. So, um, the first section is a change to the definitions, and all this does is add a definition of the word "tabulate." Excuse me for this one sec.
We are on hold for just a moment.
I apologize, Madam Chair. I didn't want to print a number of extra copies because these are thick documents, and recently there haven't, you know, last year when we did this, I don't think there was anybody who came, so I wanted to print on demand for members of the public, and now we have a member in the public. Okay, so we're proposing to add a definition of the word "tabulate," and this is to provide some more clarity regarding the difference between counting and tabulating. You may remember that, I think it was during the regular election this year, there were challenge files asserting that we had started counting ballots prior to, after 8:00 PM on election night. And at any given time, we can do a pretty accurate count of how many ballots we have received, but that does not mean we know anything about how those ballots were voted. So we wanted to make some changes in the code, and you'll see a couple of other similar changes, that clarify that the thing that we are not allowed to do before 8:00 PM on election night is to start tabulating the votes to produce results in any particular race. So counting ballots really isn't the right, and you'll see an amendment on that a little bit later. Counting ballots is a little different from tabulating votes, so we're trying to provide some clarity on, on that by defining the word "tabulate." We did discuss defining the word "count," but it was used in a number of different, sort of had a number of different connotations that made it very challenging to create a definition for, so at this time, we don't have a definition proposed for counting.
Erica, I have read this over, and I noticed the terms "counting" and "tabulating" quite a few times, so this is just a brief of the, of the code itself, because it's only the changes that were being made. So there were several places in here where I mentioned to myself to bring that up about counting. So here's the thing, I noticed, I went online, and there was no definition of counting, and as you asserted, there isn't. I thought maybe online was not an updated one. What I would suggest is that, and I understand what you're saying, that the counting process throughout this whole area, you know, all the little sections that you have, entails counting. I am wondering if it would be possible, and I know we don't normally use a negative for a definition, but I'm wondering if, if we could get this approved by the attorney, I don't know if Dean is online or not, or you can check with him later, but maybe for counting, what we could say does not mean tabulating the votes. Because as I read through this, where it said "counting" and counted this, and, you know, and so forth, and you've changed it to "tabulated" to "counted" in quite a few places in here, I think it might be important for the public, especially for the observers as well, to understand the difference between the two. So I would like to propose that we do a negative and say, "Counting does not include the tabulation of votes," and then maybe something to the effect saying, "There are many areas in the election process where counting is done," you know, or something to that effect. And I think that would be helpful. So I'm going to throw that out for, well, first of all, for you, Erica, to comment, and then the Commissioners as well for this suggestion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to take that back to our little internal team, which is essentially the clerk and myself and our council, and talk about that, because I think, you know, anything we can further add to clarify is a positive.
Okay. Commissioners, your comments?
This is Cindy Hawkins.
Cindy, go ahead. We'll have you go ahead first.
Okay, hopefully everybody can hear me fine there. The only comment I would have is, on an individual basis, as we go through the document, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Joyce, but I also think that, that clarification may be necessary in those areas of the document where it could be confusing. I think in some of those spots, it's very clear, and in others, it, it might not be, so I don't know if it needs a blanket kind of a definition, if I'm understanding your correction or your suggestion, but that would only be my comment, is to take them on a as-is basis as, as they come.
Okay, Cindy, that's a good idea. However, we only have a certain part of the code, and I'm sure there might be other sections of the code that use the word "counting" as well, as well, that we will not be reviewing today.
That's correct, and I, I thank you for that clarification, too.
Okay. Pat, do you have a comment? Would you took up the microphone? You're fine? Okay. Glennis? Glennis, good? Elaine? Okay. Well, I would suggest that you run that by your team, run it by the attorney. Like I said, I understand that definitions are usually, and just like motions, are in the positive, not negative, but in this instance, I think it might be helpful, because then you can refer to that, too, when you have a question like you did about counting. No, we're not tabulating. Counting does not include tabulating, and we have a definition that states that to the effect.
I would definitely do that.
Okay. So would it be to our benefit to go through each one of these and ask for a motion to approve? I think so, versus just an overall motion for the whole document? What is your thought on that, Erica? Or would we just need to make motions for those that we want some changes to?
I would suggest doing a motion when you think an amendment would be a benefit.
Okay.
And then we can keep track of those.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so is there any suggestions for changes to the section of definitions that has a definition for "tabulate" from the Commission? Cindy, no? She's not coming? Okay.
No.
No. Okay, hearing none, let's move on to the second.
Okay, Section 2 adds in D1A, it adds language to clarify that on a runoff ballot, there is not a space for a write-in vote. This is stated elsewhere in code, in some places where you might not think to look for it, so for example, in the Section 284004O B4, which describes the required notices that have to be published, it states the offices, so the notice has to include the offices for which candidates are to be elected with the names of candidates which will appear on the ballot for each such office, together with a statement to the effect that, except in runoff elections, voters may vote for any person qualified for such offices by writing in such person's name on the ballot and marking the O L or square proceeding. So it states that a runoff ballot won't, doesn't have a write-in in the notice section, but it doesn't state it in the contents of the ballot section. And of course, you wouldn't have a write-in on a runoff, because the Charter says that a runoff election is between the top two vote-getters, and, only for the mayor's race. And of course, the winner has to get more than 45% of the vote, and so if there's the ability for a runoff, you could just over and over and have nobody ever getting 45% of the vote. So we believe this is already the intent of law, but we are making it more clear. In D...
Let me ask if there's any questions by Commissioners. Any questions? No, I think it's good to provide consistency from one section to the other section, so if Commissioners have no comments, go ahead, Erica.
Thank you. In D1E, we are just rewording it to better express the requirements and better describe our equipment.
So you are adding the word "scanning," and then actually moving the word "scanning" and "tabulation" together, versus by, through the election scanning equipment, which I think is great, because, okay. So that's on the bottom of page 2, top of page 3. Are there any questions regarding that, Commissioners?
No question.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Section 3. This, as you know, we mail ballots to almost all registered voters in Anchorage. There are a few categories of voters that we do not automatically mail ballots to, and this is based on a status code that they may have at the state level. So this section, 284002OC, sets that, creates that carve-out for we don't mail to people in these status codes. So we are adding a status code called "list maintenance," and, but people in "list maintenance" status at the state have quote, well, I can't quote because I had to add little explanatory things, but this was the explanation for list maintenance from the state. They've had no contact with the State Division of Elections and no voter history in the past four years, and have been sent the first notice as part of the state's list maintenance process. So again, these are people who are in the list maintenance process, nothing's been heard from them, or, and they have not voted in four years. However, should this person just have been to get a break, or been in a coma for four years, they are still eligible to vote, they are still on the list of eligible voters, so should they call us and say, "I didn't get a ballot, I need a ballot," we can mail one to them. Should they walk into a vote center and try to vote, they will be on the list and can still vote.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Any questions for Commissioners? Okay, hearing none, let's move on.
Okay, the next section is about assisting a voter at a vote center or polling location, and we have proposed adding some standards to the voter assistant to make it match the standards that exist for a special needs representative. So a voter assistant is somebody who is requested by the voter to accompany them into the ballot booth at a vote center or polling location to help them if they need some sort of help. A special needs representative is someone who is authorized to take a ballot from a vote center, out of the vote center, and take it to the person who is, who needs, who isn't able to come to the vote center themselves, for some reason, doesn't have a mailed ballot, but still needs to vote. And so the things that we are adding are, we're amending the oath. The oath in here just used to say that the assistant would not divulge the vote cast by the voter, but similar to the special needs representative, and this is at the top of page 4, we're adding that the oath must include that the assistant will not vote the ballot for the voter, coerce the voter into voting for a specific candidate or issue, so adding those two elements to the oath. And then we're also stating, similar, again, to the special needs representative, that a, a voting assistant cannot be the employer of the voter, an agent of the employer of the voter, an officer or agent of the union of the voter, a candidate, or somebody who is working or volunteering for that candidate. So in these two types of situations where somebody is basically helping a voter, we're making the requirements of the type of person who can help and what they have to attest to, to match.
Okay, so Erica, again, what you're doing is you're providing consistency between the two different types of assistance to voters.
Yes.
Any questions from Commissioners? Okay, if not, moving along.
Okay, Section 5, this is another situation where we are switching up the words "counted" and "tabulated." So this is about replacement ballots, and it says, if we send somebody a replacement ballot, but they return both their original and replacement ballots, only the first ballot, the, only the first ballot received. And here's where we want to use "counted," because we're saying, this is the ballot that's going to count in the election. This is the ballot you're going to get credit for. This is the ballot that's going to be processed. Eventually, it'll get to tabulation of the specific races, but this is, this is where we want the more sort of generic term of, this ballot's going to count, that ballot's not going to count.
And again, I, I, I look at this, I know you changed "tabulated" to "counted," and that was my comment from earlier. I think, I think for somebody reading this from the outside, not understanding that the "tabulated" word was taken out, that the word "counted" was in, may come up with the wrong impression as to what that means, especially since of what happened. So, so again, I'm pushing through my, my definition for "counted," because, you know, if I'm going to read that, oh jeez, it's the only ballot counted. What happened if the other one was already counted? Do you see what I mean? And it's not, it's "tabulated" that we're looking at, not the word "counted." Does that make sense? So, okay, that was my only comment. Any other comments from Commissioners?
I have a comment. This is Cindy Hawkins.
Okay, Cindy.
Um, yes, and it, it goes back to previous meetings we've had when we've gone through the document, where we use the ballot envelope, the ballot package, some terminology there. I wonder if that would help clarify anything, because even though they're asking for a replacement ballot, they're actually asking for a replacement package, or however we want to term that.
Well, let's read that out loud. "The municipal clerk shall keep a record of each request for a replacement ballot. Unless the first ballot received has been voided, it shall be the only ballot envelope counted." Is that what you're saying, Cindy?
That, yes.
Okay.
But, you know, that may, that, I don't know if that, I'm just throwing that out and asking for that discussion.
Okay, well, we're not using the word "ballot envelope" at all in that, in that paragraph, Erica.
Okay. That would be, yeah, that's the only comment I have.
Right, so, um...
Madam Chair, I think if we add an "envelope" in 1, we'd have to do it in two places, and then we'd also have to do it in Section 2. So I, I, I don't necessarily think it's a bad change, I just, I need to think a little bit more about it.
Okay.
Yeah, because in, in number 2, it says if the municipal, no, if the municipal clerk receives additional ballots, and it could be additional ballot envelopes. You see, I see what you're saying?
Right.
From a voter, as indicated by the fact that the voter is already credited with voting, the additional ballot envelopes shall not be counted, it shall be forwarded. I don't know, I kind of like, I kind of like adding the word "envelope" in there. But I, um, any other comments from Commissioners? And this is a section where there has been some comment, if I'm correct, Erica, where people have received two ballot envelopes, and then people have questioned what, you know, what we've done with them. So what is your, are any comments from Commissioners first? No? Erica?
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't have an opinion yet. Sorry.
Okay. Well, then we don't count it, because we know the hood's broke.
Yeah, okay.
She was asking, what if the ballot is non, is in an envelope, and we don't count that at all, because we can't credit anybody with voting, so...
Yeah, this is Cindy again. Um, the only clarification that I might have is, because of the point in time in the process that you're discussing, it's actually, you're asking for the replacement ballot package or the envelope, and, and then it, then it transitions to whether or not the ballots are going to be counted, which would be after opening. And, you know, I guess, not to confuse the, the only reason I brought it up is because I, I did have a question on the "counted" at this point, and the way it was being used.
Okay. Well, instead of...
Can I make a comment on what Cindy said?
Yeah, go ahead. Erica's going to comment, Cindy.
Cindy, you said that the ballot won't be counted until after it's, the envelope is opened, but I think that's where the word "count" actually has a broader meaning. It, it's like, I'm trying to think of an example of, of using the word "counted" not to say, "One, two, three, four, five counted," but to say, "My, my, my opinion counted. My opinion counted. They took, they paid attention to me." And I think that sort of sense of the word "counted" works in some of the ways that we use "counted" here, and this is one of them, that, that this ballot counts, but this ballot doesn't count, because you, you know, the same person sent them in, and this, this first one came in first. So not "counted" as in, "This is ballot 47," but "counted" as in, "This one is going to be, is qualifies," sort of. And, and that's why, one of the reasons that I find it so challenging to define the word "counted," and why I thought this change to the word "counted." So, does...
Erica, could I comment right on that alone? If you replace the word "counted" with "process"?
We thought about that...
So unless the first ballot refused, has been voided, it shall be the only ballot processed?
We thought about that, and we rejected it for some reason that I can't remember, so we'll, we'll revisit that.
Okay. Okay, okay.
Cindy, here's another suggestion. You know, the, the heading of 285140 says "replacement ballots." Maybe it should just say "replacement ballot packages."
Mm-hmm.
Have you thought about that, Erica?
Yes, no, anything there that would help clarify that, I think would be good.
Then you wouldn't have to clarify anything in that particular section, because we're talking about replacement ballot packages.
You don't think that would be more confusing for the... You don't think that would be more confusing for the average citizen reading this? Because they're just thinking about ballot.
Okay.
And we don't use the word replacement, we use facsimile when we're, when we're, you know, copying them, if the ballot can't be read for some reason, because they put scratch marks all over it, whatever.
You know, Joyce, it may be that we're just going down a rabbit hole here, you know, and trying to clarify it too much. It might be that, just because of our particular knowledge of, of all of the different aspects, maybe we're confusing the issue, and that Erica's, the more simplistic we can make it, but still not complicate the sentence, it may be that it stands just fine, and I, I apologize for bringing it up, but it might be just because of our particular experience with the whole process, that it's, it sounded confusing to us. It depends upon who this is actually directed toward.
And that's true. I have found that when you are really involved in what's going on, sometimes you write things that are way beyond the general public, which I've done myself in the past, so, why don't we, I agree with that, Cindy. Sometimes we get stuck in the minutia of things, and that's maybe what we're doing here. So, are, is the commission okay to just move on and leave that as is then? Okay.
I am.
Okay. Okay, everybody, okay, no objections then. Okay. Why don't we move on to the next one, Erica, then?
Thank you. And I appreciate the discussion, so thank you very much. Section six is about the appointment and privileges of observers. So, we added a number of clarifications and changes to this section that I will walk through. So, first of all, we are clarifying that an observer must be registered for each election, separately registered for each election, with one exemption that I'll, I'll touch on when we get there. The number of observers that is authorized may be subject to space or regulatory constraints. So, at a vote center or polling location, there can be one observer per candidate and one observer per organization that supports or opposes a ballot measure. At the election center, you can have up to four. Well, if you had a situation where, so, if you'll recall the April ballot, we had fifteen candidates for mayor, we had probably about twelve school board candidates, maybe more, we had, I think, eleven ballot measures. So, if you think about four, you know, four candidates, four observers for each candidate for mayor, that's sixty, plus four, twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight for school board, that would take us to a hundred and eight, plus, I mean, you can see that the numbers are getting out of control. Now, is it likely that that would happen?
No.
It's not likely that every member in the unit is gonna have, is gonna be asking for four, or even one observer, and it's not likely that that will be true also for the school board or the organization supporting or opposing oppositions. But, in the off chance that the numbers do get to a point where we just can't handle that many people, we do need to be able to, to say, to say no. And, so, this just changes that, and, and in the observers manual handbook, we did add a statement that the reduction of observers to less than one per candidate or organization would only happen in extraordinary circumstances. So, we're not trying to do that, but we're trying to give ourselves an out if there is some extraordinary situation where you just get, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy, I mean, you know, more observers here than there are actual workers, kind of thing. So, that's the proposed change at the bottom of page five.
Okay, is there any comment from commissioners? I have one, of course. Sorry. I am wondering where you list one, two, and three on the bottom here? If it would be easier to, since one and two have to do with polling location and vote center, maybe you could make number one polling location and vote center, and then A and B underneath that, which I think might be easier to look at. And then, number two would be designated return location. So, then that way, you've got, you're talking about the polling location and vote center, and you have two conditions for that, and then you have a designated return location, and then you have that information underneath. And I just think that is clearer for somebody to read. What is the commissioner's thought on that? I don't, I don't know if I like the idea, so I'm bringing it up. I mean, I just felt it was easier to know that, did you see what I'm saying, Erica? So, so number, number one would become polling location and vote center, and then the number one that you have becomes A, and the number two becomes B.
Yes, right, right, yeah.
So, I just think that helps.
I do see that.
Yeah. So, everyone is okay with that? Everyone okay with that? Okay.
I have a question, and this is Cindy.
Go ahead.
Cindy. Yeah, just to clarify again, from you, Joyce, are you suggesting that you break it out based upon the particular location? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
So, number one and two right now both deal with polling location and vote center. So, we changed number one to say polling location and vote center, and changed the number one currently to A, and the number two to B. You see what I mean? So, we have an A and B under polling location and vote center. And then, number three would really become number two designated return location. So, all we're doing is just defining it out.
Okay.
Okay. So, if everyone is okay with that, I think, I think that would be a, a good clarification. Everyone okay with that? Do we need a vote on that?
Madam Chair, I, I think maybe what the easiest thing would be to do is if there's general agreement that this would be a good amendment, then we'll mark it down, we'll take a break at the end, I'll go write up the amendments, and then we could just vote on the resolution.
Okay, all right. So, if everyone is in agreement with that, suggested change. Okay. All right. Go ahead, Erica.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, turning on to page six. One of the changes that we are proposing for the future is that training will be provided to observers by the municipal clerk's office. Currently, the idea is that observer training would be provided by the candidate or the organization, but we really found that wasn't a benefit to the observers, because they weren't really getting the thorough explanation of how the election processes were working. And so, we felt that it was more reasonable for the municipal clerk's office to provide that training, because we're the experts, and we could really give the observers the knowledge that will help them be more successful as observers. In order to provide them with that training, we need to have a registration period, because it can't be that somebody signs up to be an observer three days before the election, and we have to drop everything and do a training for them. That's not gonna work. So, we proposed registration periods that are a certain set of days before the regular election, and, or a special election in one, before a runoff election in two, and relating to a recount in three. So, for a regular election, sixty-two days is the day after the last day to withdraw as a candidate, and that is right around the beginning of February. And twenty-two days is the day before ballots are mailed, and that's right about the point that we get even busier. So, that forty-day period is when we would offer trainings, and when people could, or we probably have the last training like right after, you know, maybe on day twenty-three or day twenty-one. And that would be the registration period for observers. And then, those, those dates are similar for the special election. In a runoff election, we are proposing that if you're registered for, to observe for the regular election, you can also observe in the runoff, as long as the candidate you're observing for is in the runoff. And new observers in a runoff who didn't register and observe in the regular election would have this set of ten days to register. And then, in a recount, so the recount section of code states that candidates with an interest in the recount may have up to two observers. And so, this proposes that if you are a registered observer in the election that's generating the recount, then you don't need to re, you don't need to re-register, but that new registration forms for recount observers have to come in twenty-four hours in advance. Training for the recount is really sort of different. You don't have to understand the entire election procedure to participate in the recount. So, usually, well, what we did this year and last year with the recounts is we just took the first half hour or so to talk through, this is how the recount's gonna happen. So, it was kind of a training for the recount, so we didn't feel that the people who registered to observe just for the recount who are new have to do the, the entire training. Any questions about that?
I do have one question.
Yes.
This is Joyce, the chair. So, under three, you have late filed registration forms may be accepted and processed subject to the availability of staff and resources. Does that happen with the other two elections as well? Where you might have late filed registration forms for-
No, because they would have to go through the trainings. The recount people don't have that training requirement.
Got it, I just wanna clarify, I got it. Okay, thank you. Okay.
And, this is Cindy, I have a question.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Erica, does this also mean that the training that's gonna be required, which I know is in the, the Observer's Handbook modification, does that not have to be included in this part of this document?
Because the Observer's Handbook is also adopted by the Assembly, the training is, is a requirement, so would, you know, assuming it's adopted, will be a requirement, it doesn't have to be in the code.
Okay, so you don't have to reference that document at all in this?
That is referenced in D two on this page in lines thirty-three and thirty-four.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? Okay, let's move ahead.
Okay, so, moving to generally the bottom of page seven, this is some new language that states that an observer may not possess any mechanical or electronic means of recording images or sound within designated areas. This is to ensure that there is no recording of confidential information, which is not allowed.
Okay, Erica, I do have a question. Shall not possess any mechanical or electronic means of recording, and so forth and so on. I look at that as being very difficult to enforce. And to enforce that particular section. Is there any thought to how you shall know that they shall not possess that? I mean, I, has there been a discussion about that? I, I know some of the issues, again, that happened in, in previous elections, and this just looks like an idea.
So, we, we have discussed it, and we've talked about getting lockers for the front, for cellphone lockers.
Okay.
We'll certainly have signs posted, everybody has to check in, and so, the receptionist can ask them, do you have a cellphone? You're not allowed to have a cellphone. You know, so, there are, there are ways in which, you know, we're not gonna search anybody, but if somebody does say, no, I don't have a cellphone, and then we do find that they are, you know, violating this, they'll be picked out.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you had thought about that, because my first thought, which I put down here, was hard to enforce. Shall not possess, I mean, I can walk around with my purse and have my phone in it.
Well, you're encouraged not to have your purse in this area, too.
Right, right, right. I'm just thinking ahead to-
No, it's-
For how difficult this may be. And maybe this might be something that needs to be revisited after you're trying-
I have a comment.
Cindy?
Joyce?
Yes, go ahead, Cindy.
Yes, I have a comment. Yes, just a clarification. You know, they also have taken oaths, as any election official has, so the observers have also. I would imagine they have some particular meat legally to adhere to their oaths, and if, for whatever reason, it would be discovered that a recording had been made, that something could be done in that, in that manner, law-wise.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Anybody else? Okay, that was my only comment.
Thank you. Moving on to page eight. We deleted the section about not observing signatures on the polling location register. That is sort of a older historical limitation that doesn't really apply in the current vote by mail system. We are encouraging and asking the observers not to disturb election officials, but to bring their questions to the municipal clerk or the designee. One thing that we did institute in the runoff election was having a floor manager who was walking around, helping the observers, relocating them when they wanted to move around off the yellow ring road, and is a person who can either answer their questions or help get their questions to the municipal clerk. But that really helps keep the disturbances to the election officials who are doing, performing actual work, that will really reduce that.
I do think that's a great change. Election officials is pretty broad. We're considered election officials.
Yes, you are.
You know, all the workers in here are considered election officials. So, now you're talking about the municipal clerk or designee. Again, I do have one question. What does it mean, or on the ballot envelopes? That seems, it says, "May ask brief questions of the municipal clerk or designee regarding processes used by election, by the election officials," or on the ballot envelopes? That, that, I need a clarification, because I don't think that makes sense.
I agree, so let's see. It used to say, "May ask brief questions of election officials regarding processes..." Huh.
It was there before, but to me, it doesn't belong there, because you're talking about the election, you know, regarding processes used by the election officials, and that should just do it completely, done, over with.
Yes, I think you're right. I think we need to fix that.
Okay, I think we need to delete that, because I don't feel that makes any sense. Or on the ballot envelopes. Okay? I'm sorry if I'm doing a lot of talking, but I've done a lot of-
No, no.
A lot of things with legislation at the legislature, you gotta be kinda picky, so... Okay, so I think that that one should be deleted, that, those words there. What section are we talking about here? Geez, it's going way back. We're talking about twenty-five, three hundred.
Three hundred.
Okay.
E for each.
Each, okay, all right. Okay, are all the commissioners in favor of that? Yes?
I agree.
Okay, not opposed. Okay, all right. Go ahead, Erica, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, that was a good cast, thank you. So, and then just some rewording here in F to clarify that, you know, if you violate a provision of this subsection, interfere with the election process, or don't comply with the, with law or handbook, that you can be removed. Okay, section seven. Here we're back to our counting and tabulating thing, and this was the example I was talking about at the beginning, where there was confusion about what we had been doing prior to eight p.m. on election day. And again, the, the thing that we are not allowed to do is to tabulate votes to learn about results. So, we changed this from counting ballots, which, again, we're counting ballots all day long before the elec, before election day, but what we, what we will not do before eight p.m. on election day is to tabulate any votes. So, that, that's the most, of, of all those changes, that one's the most significant, in my opinion.
I forgot that last time.
I'm sorry, Pat.
Go ahead, Pat. Use the mic. Oh, just a comment. Okay. We were challenged on that last time.
Yes.
Okay. And that's, and that's also where I came up with the counting thing, because right here, we're saying on line eight, "Return for later counting of its enclosed ballot." So, so the election officials shall review all ballot envelopes, which we're using envelopes here, to determine each- to determine each voter's eligibility and the status of the envelope as valid. Eligible, as a valid eligible return for later counting of its enclosed ballot. And that's what we wanna say, right?
Yep.
I think that one could go either way.
Well, that's why I'm
Yeah.
I, I'm, I, I put counting or tabulating in my notes on the side, so. Let me read that again because I kinda messed it up when I read, I didn't get a good flow. Um, the election officials shall review all ballot envelopes to determine each voter's eligibility and the status of the envelope as a valid eligible return for later counting of its enclosed ballot. And then we say um, the review of envelopes, do we wanna say ballot envelopes there? The review of envelopes may commence upon receipt and shall commence no later than the day after the, the day after election day. Uh, no votes shall be tabulated before eight P M. on election day, or the closing of the polls pursuant to subsection da-da-da. Um, I like the fact that it says, no votes shall be tabulated before eight P M., I think that's great. I'm a little confused about the sentence above that. So Erica, do you have any comment about that? Um, are we, are we, we're sure that we're saying return for later counting of its enclosed ballot is my question?
I wonder if um, we should change it, sort of duck this question by changing it to, the election officials shall review all ballot envelopes to determine each voter's eligibility and the status of the envelope as a valid eligible return um, under the standards of twenty-eight seventy oh three oh.
We could do that. Or, why don't we, we could just take off for later counting of its enclosed ballot. Basically, what we're saying is, the election officials shall review all ballot envelopes to determine each voter's eligibility and the status of the envelope as a valid eligible return.
I like that.
Period.
I like that.
We're taking that off.
Period.
We don't need to, again, we don't need to define for what? Then um, and then um, and then I think we need to add the word ballot in front of the review of envelopes because we're using it up above. So the review of ballot envelopes may commence upon receipt and shall commence no later than the day after da-da-da. So I, I think if we take out for later counting of its enclosed ballot and then add the word ballot where it says the review of ballot envelopes, I think we're more clear here. And I think this is, this is really a very, very, to me, extremely important section for people to understand what we're doing for counting of ballots, or tabulating of ballots versus accepting and so forth. So, do those two suggestions make sense then?
I think those are great.
Okay, everybody, Cindy, you too, everybody in favor? Okay, I think it makes it clearer.
I am in favor.
I'm sorry Cindy?
Yes, I, I agree.
Okay, yeah, I just think it makes it clearer. To me, like I said, this is, this is so extremely important to understand kind of what's happening here so that people know that we're not tabulating, you know, before eight P M. on election day, or the closing of the polls.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this is um, twenty-eight seventy oh one oh A. Alright, I like that change, so everyone's in favor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright, okay. Go ahead Erica.
Thank you. Um, section eight is a conforming change to an amendment that was made um, in January of this year. So in January of this year, um, the ordinance in uh, section A one of this section, which is not included in this ordinance, said that um, uh, ballot return envelope from a military or overseas voter could, so, so it, it, it says, a ballot that arrives after the public canvas, session, start of the public, uh, can, session of canvas shall not be counted. And then we added except, if it comes from a military or overseas voter, it has to arrive by noon on the day of certification. So we sort of added that extra four days for ballots coming in from military and overseas voters. But one was, um, A one is a vote by mail ballot shall not be counted. And A two is a vote by mail ballot shall be counted. And we hadn't made that conforming change in A two. So this is just a conforming change with the um, policy change that was agreed on uh, in, in the last ordinance.
Okay, so again, consistency from one section to another is really what's needed. Okay, any comment from commissioners? Okay, let's move forward.
Thank you.
I have
Oh Cindy, yes.
Wait, 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 sorry. Don't move too fast, I, I just had a comment here and I'm trying to remember what the comment was. It's under C I, is that right, C one? And I have highlighted, can verify receipt of the envelope. And I think maybe that's just more of my going down the rabbit hole again, let me just read it again. The ballot return envelope is postmarked no later than the day of the election or the USPS or mail distributor can verify receipt of the envelope. No, I guess that's fine, I was thinking it should say the ballot envelope, but.
No, I, Cindy, this is Joyce, I agree with your later comment because it mentions it in the beginning. So, I think just saying the envelope is fine there.
Yep, 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 I think I was just kinda going too deep, sorry.
Any other comments from commissioners? Okay, go ahead Erica.
Thank you. Um, so before I talk about section nine, I wanna jump to section ten, which is on page eleven. So there's this um, section B is deleted. And what this section says is improper or damaged ballots. Um, when a voter has cast a ballot that has races or propositions which they're not eligible to vote for, which is what's considered an improper ballot, or if there's a damaged ballot, then only votes cast in those races and propositions for which the voter is eligible, eligible to vote would have, if, to vote would have voted if using a proper ballot shall be counted. So it's kind of combining these two concepts in a way that doesn't exactly make sense. Because when you have somebody who voted in races that they're not eligible for, you facsimile onto an area allied ballot, and then you have a damaged ballot, you facsimile onto the exact same ballot type. So what we did is we deleted it here in twenty-eight eighty oh one oh B. We moved the issue of ineligible, of improper ballots into section nine. Um, on the previous page, on page ten, under ballot counting procedure. When a voter casts a ballot containing races or propositions for which the voter is not eligible to vote, only votes cast in those races and propositions for which the voter is eligible to vote shall be counted. Facsimile ballots shall be created for counting of these votes in accordance with section B on the law. So we moved the concept of improper ballots into twenty-eight eighty oh oh five, we felt it fit better there. And then, the issue of damaged ballots already is addressed at twenty-eight eighty oh five oh A, which you can see at the bottom of page eleven. The election officials shall prepare facsimiles of all damaged electronically transmitted or other ballots that cannot be read by the election equipment. So the issue of damaged ballots is already addressed and the issue of improper ballots has been moved. So that addresses um, sections nine and section ten.
Okay, I do have a question Erica.
Yes.
Again with my counting and tabulating. Um, if you go on, on the bottom of page ten, um, D, where you added the new language, where it says facsimile ballots shall be created for, do we wanna say tabulating of these votes? Because we're saying that um, when a voter casts a ballot containing races or propositions for which the voter is not eligible to vote, only votes cast in those races and propositions for which the voter is eligible to vote shall be counted. But then we're saying facsimile ballots, because we're saying now that they've been facsimiled, shall be created for tabulating because we're, we're not really doing anything to me with counting of those. Guess I'm not using
I have a comment.
Go ahead Cindy.
I have a comment Joyce.
Alright.
Yeah, I think they have to have, in order to be, they have to be facsimiled, then they actually, I see them as being counted in the scanning process and then they're not tabulated until uh, election night.
Okay, so right, we do facsimile ballots and count them prior to the, okay, I got it, thank you, thank you Cindy.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else on sections nine or ten?
No, go ahead.
Thank you.
No questions from commissioners?
Um, so, in section eleven, the text of this section says that when the clerk is ready to create results, the clerk has to have either the municipal ombudsman, the director of I T, or the municipal auditor there to observe. And what they're observing is tabulation, not counting. So we just changed the title of this section.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments from commissioners on that, section eleven? No, okay, go ahead Erica.
Okay, so um, section twelve is going to look familiar to you because we worked with this a lot this year. This is about adjudication, the rules of adjudication, and boy, we worked a lot with those. Um, so, this, so I know we, we changed the title to say counting votes. And, and again, this is where we're just, it gets complicated. We're just thinking about, well, this one's gonna count and that one's not gonna count. It's not the process of tabulation which is what the machine does. So that's why I left this as counting.
Okay.
Um, so just a little bit of clarification on the equipment and the scanning about the facsimile ballots there on page eleven. And then on um, page twelve, uh, is this, the rules of adjudication of votes. So, the relevant sentence in B four that was sort of confusing was, marks for both a write-in and a candidate named on the ballot shall not be counted unless challenged. Well, did that mean, I mean, that's an overvote. When you, when you vote for a candidate and you vote for a write-in, that's an overvote. So, if they challenge it, what happens? Like, you really didn't explain what was supposed to happen in that situation. So we uh, we proposed to say that they won't be counted except in a recount in accordance with B twelve. And then we added a new B twelve, which is about um, when you vote for, when, it, about how you look at these things in a recount. So in a recount, and I'll come back to eleven in this to say, in a recount, a vote for a candidate named on the ballot can be counted if the voter wrote the same candidate's name into the write-in line and then voted for both. So, under the regular rules, the, um, it's an overvote. But when you get to the recount, you can really, you have the ability to look at it and say, oh, they voted for the same person, a judge in a courtroom is gonna say, it's very clear who, what the intent of this voter was. So in that situation, you can count the vote for that candidate. In uh, twelve B, we are clarifying that if the voter uh, wrote the candidate's name in the write-in line, but they didn't actually color in the oval, that we can count that during a recount. So that's the new section twelve. Um, in eleven, in order to vote for a write-in candidate, um, it says you have to mark the oval and we put in that exception for, that I just talked about in a recount, if you didn't mark the oval, we can still count that.
Okay, let's, let's just say right now, anybody have any questions about what Erica said so far? I think that's all pretty clear. Cindy, any comment?
No, no, not really.
Alright, go ahead Erica, just wanna make sure.
I'm glad you're finding it clear because I, it, it gets pretty confusing. We, we, we went around and around in this section for a whole lot of time. Okay, in thirteen, we um, we just needed to re, re-clarify our issues with write-in votes. So a write-in vote doesn't count in a runoff election because there's no space provided um, for a supervisor, supervisory board candidate if the candidate hasn't registered as a qualified write-in. Or um, unless there are more write-in votes than for any candidate. So basically, we ignore the write-ins, if, if there's fifty write-in votes and a hundred votes for the winning candidate, we ignore the write-ins. We don't really care who they're for until we start looking at a recount. But if there's a hundred write-in votes and fifty for the top candidate, well then we have to go back and look, who are those write-in candidates for? Was there any particular write-in candidate who got more than fifty votes? So, does that make sense?
Yep, yes it does.
Okay, and then the very last change in section D on page thirteen is um, a, a code clarification that the adjudication of a vote is a challengeable item by a, uh, an observer. We did allow challenges in this last election, but it, it wasn't um, clearly set forth and clear that this was a challengeable item, so uh, we have added that.
And Erica, I really like that because I like the word specificity. Because what you're saying is, is that you're not going to address it at all unless they are actually pointing to a particular code violation. Um, and I like that because like you said, last, last election, there were some issues that came out that weren't. And so you're not going to address it at all. Um, I, I, I read this and I was really happy with, with what you put in there after observing some things. So is there any comment from any commissioners? Okay, looks like they're all kinda shaking their heads a tree. Okay, so, thank you Erica.
Thank you. And in the very last section, um, to discuss, uh, we just made some very minor um, changes to the recount procedure, um, so that when we uh, do the recount, we're comparing the recount results to the original results. I think the count there was a word that like, let's not go there, let's talk about results. And then um, down in D, we just pulled this statement from C two because this statement is applicable to all recounts, not just recounts that um, are under C one and C two. Cause if you read C, it says, when available, the recounts will be limited to reviewing the electronic version of ballot images. Otherwise, you go to one and two. And having the rules of chapter twenty-eight eighty, which is that adjudication of votes that we just discussed, saying that shall be followed in the recount, if you only say that applies in this otherwise situation, well that doesn't really make any sense. So we pulled it into a new section B to say, no, this applies um, in any type of True. Um, so with that, those are all the proposed changes in um, the ordinance. And if you'd like, I can start talking about the handbook.
Okay, does the commission have any other, uh, does the commission have any other questions about um, the ordinance and the changes to the code? Okay, hearing done, go ahead Erica, to the eleven.
Thank you Madam Chair. I think it was scheduled to go till noon, um, so it's a lot to run through in twenty minutes, so I'm gonna try to be fast. Oh, is it twelve forty? Oh, okay, good, we have more time than I thought.
Alright, well the clock over there says twelve forty.
No, it says eleven forty.
I meant to eleven forty.
Yeah, so we have almost an hour. Okay, um, so, the observer manual, um, the existing one was, was getting pretty old.
Just a minute Erica.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's till noon.
Till noon?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so you may need to go to extend.
Okay, we have twenty minutes.
Yeah. Um, so the last um, significant, uh, there were some, some updates in twenty nineteen. Um, you know, this sort of came, thi- this version sort of came to be in twenty seventeen, but it's been several years since there have been any significant changes to this. And because we had changes to the observer section proposed in code, we needed to update the observer handbook to match um, those sections in code as well. And it has to go to the Assembly with the ordinance because again, it is adopted by reference. So um, if I could just direct your attention to the table of contents on pages four and five, there's sort of two major sections to this. The first section, which goes up through page sixteen, is um, really about the observers and that's what I'm gonna focus on with you today. Starting at section seventeen through the end is a general overview of the election process, um, which I know you are all very familiar with. Um, so I, I, I think your time spent reviewing that is less, um, it would be better to focus our attention on the observer section. But, um, I'm happy to take any comments on, on the election process section two. I just I just don't know if we'll have time to go over that, uh, today. So, um, moving, uh, on into pages 6 and 7, um, so we have an introductory section. And in this section, we do state that in the event of a conflict between this handbook and applicable law, the law is controlling. And then we also talk under the guiding principle that, you know, all of the election officials and the observers, um, you know, have a principal interest being the conduct of a fair and honest election. So we're, we're all, we, we're marching in the same direction, we have the same, uh, goal. And we thought it was important to point that out. Um, the, about observers section, um, states that, you know, observers have more access than the general public because they've agreed to follow these rules and expectations. Um, general statement about what they're allowed to do and how they should conduct themselves, um, you know, professionally, not disrupt, uh, the election or interfere with voters. They should be familiar with the law and procedures. They should monitor constructively, um, and, you know, respect the process. Um, qualifications, that they have to be, um, designated by a candidate or an organized, uh, organizational, organized group. The candidate, um, themselves may be an observer. Um, this, uh, title... Um, the number of allowed observers, uh, so again, this matches, um, the changes we made in code. And that sentence that I, uh, told you about when we were talking about the code is at the very end of this paragraph. "The reduction in the number of observers to fewer than one per candidate shall be limited to extraordinary circumstances." Um, there was some, there, there remained, despite that statement, some concern with this, um, from the Ethics and Elections Committee. So I know Barbara's gonna be working with one of the assembly members on some potential amendments, so we may see some, some changes to this.
So Erica, are you saying to the observer, "This handbook versus the code changes to page 7?"
I'm not sure. I am not sure whether there would be changes to both or just the handbook.
Okay, any good?
The, um, next page sets out the registration process that I talked about, um, when we were talking about the code. Um, I would point out that, um... The registration process, the form has to be signed by the candidate, campaign manager, or chairperson of the group. Um, the confidentiality agreement has to be signed and some, by the observer and submitted along with the registration form. And this is that agreement that they won't disclose any confidential information or use it for any purpose other than determining whether or not to challenge, to, to make an elec-, a challenge. Um, observer training, so this is that section where we, uh, say you have to go through training and that we're gonna provide it. Um, we will, uh, do our best to provide at least three training sessions before a regular election, two before a special election, and one before a runoff election, yes.
Erica, I have a question, um, back on page 8 where you're talking about that they have to sign a confidentiality, confidentiality agreement?
Yes.
Is there somewhere in here stating what happens if they breach that?
No.
I mean, referencing like, um, you know, state statutes or, or anything like that?
So...
I mean, wasn't that brought up before?
Yeah, so the agreement's actually in the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Um, and it's on page 6 of what you can see. I mean, it's in current code and, and it's listed in the ordinance. And it doesn't say, uh, what happens if they violate it. Although, there are places in, um, there's places in code and the observer, or manual that says, um, so let me look for...
Well, while you're looking, I think it's important somewhere, either on the form that they sign or in the handbook, stating what the consequences are. Because I think if someone knows what the consequences are if they're breaking the confidentiality, it has a little bit more meaning and a little bit more maybe conscious, "Ah, I can't do this," sort of thing.
So, on page 12, all we say is, "Observers who do not comply with applicable law or this handbook..."
Now, which number are you on?
Uh, I'm, I'm on the, um, it's this paragraph right before challenges on page 12.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's on the wrong page.
No, no, we weren't on page 12, but this is addressing your question.
Okay.
"Observers who do not comply with applicable law or this handbook may be immediately removed from the election location at the direction of your book club or duty meeting without prior notification to candidate or organization, may have their observer credentials revoked, and may be subject to such further action as may be authorized by law." So that's the only thing that I can think of that talks about consequences. And again, it doesn't really, it's not very clear, so...
Give me just a second to absorb this.
Yep.
Well, that at least says, uh, you know, authorized by law. I, I, I'll go ahead and leave it. I, I think it might, it, it, it might be better if it was a little bit more, um, defined or a little bit more stated out. It just seems, I don't wanna say it's an afterthought, but that's what I'm trying to say. So I don't know what the commissioners think about that, but, um, well, let's let it go. But it's something to keep in the back of your mind if something is gonna be changed.
I've made a note.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. Uh, observers have to sign up for the training sessions, um, they're encouraged to sign up...
Okay, what page are we on now?
I'm sorry, I'm back to page 9.
Yeah, okay.
Um, they are encouraged to sign up early as the number of attendees for each training session may be limited. If there's nobody signed up 24 hours in advance, the session will be canceled. Um, if you have attended a session within six months of the election, you don't need to attend another one. So for instance, if you have a regular election and then you have a special election a month later, you don't need to go through the training then. Um, but if you, uh, submit all the forms, go through the training, then you get your badge. Um, and that, and it has to be signed by your candidate or campaign manager or chairperson, but that then basically, um, gives you the credentials to begin observing. Observer rights and obligations, um, they have to sign in, show their badge, possibly show their ID. They have to wear their badge. They wear their badge so only their name is showing and not the name of their candidate or organization. Um, at the election center, they also get a lanyard. Moving on to page 10, just a reminder about campaigning restrictions that exist in code. Um, under the observer's role, uh, talk about where they can be. And they can watch setup procedures, they can watch the conduct, and they get to watch the, um, they get to stay until all procedures are complete. Um, they ha-, uh, can submit challenges as described in the challenges section, but they have no duties in the conduct of the election. Um, observer conduct, uh, they are encouraged to work in shifts, but can come and go from election locations at will, um, within the limitations on number of observers and following the requirements for signing in and out. You know, as I was looking at some other jurisdictions, there are places where it say, "If you come in, you can't leave for four hours, or you can't leave for six hours." I mean, it was really kinda interesting, right? And I, I can sorta understand that, but we're not, we're not going there.
Yes.
Um, the information about when we start work, you know, when the located, when the various locations, um, begin their work is gonna be noticed, but we're not gonna be waiting for observers to show up in order to start. Um, uh, number two, uh, observers get to be in designated positions that allow a full view of all actions regarding ballot preparation and ballot return processing. They, um, at polling locations and vote centers can't be behind the election officials and shall be a minimum of six feet away from the voting booth and the ballot box. And at drop boxes, uh, they have to be at least 10 feet away from the drop box. Flinders, do you have a question? They cannot campaign within 50 feet.
Yeah, oh, okay, I was gonna say, use the microphone.
Um, number three is a new thing, that observers shall not, um, oppose or talk directly to voters. Um, but it sort of relates to campaigning. There's really no reason for an observer to be talking to a voter. Uh, number four is, uh, discussions between observers have to be either outside the location or in specific areas to avoid distracting the, um, election officials. Uh, number five is about not having electronic or mechanical devices, um, no telephone calls, um, not reporting confidential voter information. Coats and large bags, um, are not allowed. Personal items really ought to be left in the vehicle or at home, and of course, not responsible for those items. Only water in sealed containers is permitted in designated areas. Other food and drink is limited to specific areas, which would be our reception area here, and that observers should clean out after themselves. Um... No blue or black pens or other devices capable of marking ballots. I'm sorry, onto page 12. Submit questions to the clerk or designee. Can't touch any, basically, anything other than a chair. Uh, have to be polite. Um, you have to follow the directions, uh, reason, all reasonable directions of election officials, the municipal clerk, and onsite security personnel. And any observer who creates, uh, an observer who creates a public disturbance may be asked to leave. These rules are to be followed at all times. And, um, if you don't apply, follow these rules or the law, you can be kicked out and, um, sorry, you can be asked to leave and, uh, uh, may have your, uh, credentials revoked or, like we talked about, subject to further action as authorized by law. Okay, now into the interesting part, challenges. So, we are sticking to the code in terms of what can be challenged. Um, so there are four things that can be challenged in accordance with Title 28. Voter eligibility, a ballot not being properly passed or being improperly rejected, signature verification, or the adjudication of a vote. In, um, similarities between all four types of challenges is they have to be submitted on the form provided. Um, I don't have the forms here, I've been working on those, um, but I don't have them yet for due review, so I apologize for that. Um, challenging voter eligibility, basically, you can challenge if you believe the voter's not a citizen, isn't 18 by the date of the election, not a resident of the municipality or of the district in which they are, um, seeking to vote, or if they're registered to vote in another jurisdiction. Um, if an observer submits a challenge, the ballot envelope of the voter that they are challenging will be segregated, um, but they have to, the observer must then have the challenge validated by the campaign manager, the candidate, or the, um, chairperson of the organization by having a copy of their challenge signed by that person. Once the challenge is validated, the municipal clerk or designee will respond. Challenges and responses are shared with all candidates or organizations who have registered observers for that relevant race or issue. And if the, um, candidate, I'm just gonna use candidate instead of candidate, campaign manager, or chairperson, but you know what I mean. Um, if the candidate wishes to appeal the municipal clerk's response, they have to submit, re, they have to refile the validated challenge within 24 hours of the response. Um, and then it would come to you at the public session of candidates, and you would keep the ballot envelope segregated.
Erica, is...
Yes.
A few minutes before noon, we are not gonna be finished, so how do we go about extending the meeting? Do I just make a note, uh, statement?
Um, you should make a motion and a second and vote.
Okay, is, uh, someone would make a motion?
Yeah.
Is it... Okay, uh, had I moved that we extend the meeting until we are finished, there a second, one is a seconding. Um, sorry, that... Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, thank you Cindy, we will extend the meeting until we are finished. Go ahead Erica.
Thank you. Challenging a ballot that was not properly passed or that a ballot was improperly rejected, um, these are, uh, this is all under 2870030. Um, so you, uh, if the voter did not sign the voter declaration, a voter who's unable to sign, did not make a mark or have the mark properly witnessed, um, the ballot was not received by the various deadlines that are set in code, the voter already voted in the election, the voter did not provide required identification before the opening of the canvas, or the ballot was improperly rejected. Um, the challenge has to be in writing, and the response is essentially the same as challenging the voter qualification. Challenging of signature verification, um, this is also allowed under 2870030. One thing we wanna emphasize is that, um, you can't slow down the election officials who are performing signature verification, so, but you, you know, you're gonna have to be on the ball. Um, and so you can either say, "The person said this wasn't a valid signature, and I think it was a valid signature," or you can say, "The person said this was a valid signature, and I don't think it was a valid signature." So those would basically be what you would challenge. Um, the challenge has to be in writing on the form provided. If a signature, uh, verification is challenged, it will be elevated to the municipal clerk and the deputy clerk, who together will make a final determination. And, um, that challenges, along with the relevant signatures, will be provided to the municipal prosecutor at the end of the election. And this is modeled on how they do it in Denver. Um, all of their challenge, signature challenges go to the DA, uh, for investigation. But, you know, without the, um, training of the signature verification, there really isn't an appeal process beyond the municipal clerk.
Question?
Oh, yes.
Go ahead Cindy.
So, well, in the, in the event that something like that would happen, and, and I understand, you know, the training involved, if there is a challenge that goes to a DA, what is the ultimate, um, uh, result of the ballot envelope at that point? Is it just not then tabulated? Opened, tabulated, all of that?
So, the, the, what happens to the envelope will be determined by the municipal clerks and the deputy clerk. So if the clerk and the, if, if, so I'm just gonna say Barbara and myself. If Barbara and myself think that it's a, um, signature match, then the ballot will be counted. If we don't think it's a signature match, then, uh, if, the ballot will be rejected.
And if they, and they, uh, they being the observer, if they continue to challenge that particular decision?
The, the, they, I mean, the challenge will be provided to the municipal prosecutor. Whether the municipal prosecutor does anything with it, we have no control over that. But the...
Okay.
The observer has to, you, you know, there's also, there's always the ability to contest the election, um, so they can, you know, if they have a candidate or 10 voters can contest that the election was not properly run and that something was done, um, so improperly as to, uh, change the results. Which, of course, is unlikely in, with the concept of one signature having gone the other way. But certainly possible in a race that was decided by one vote. Um, but, you know, the observers are not trained in signature verification either, so the, the final, uh, determination is made by the clerk and the deputy clerk as, as proposed in this document.
That makes sense. Thank you Erica.
You're welcome. Um, challenging the adjudication of the vote, um, as we noted, the observer has to explain how the ballot adjudication rules were improperly applied. Um, and then we sort of set forth the types of things make a challenge. Um, improper anticipation of the oval being wholly or partially filled in, improper anticipation of the voter's correction, improper anticipation of documents or handwritten notes, improper anticipation of a write-in vote. Um, they have to provide that in writing. They have to provide that in writing. The municipal clerk or designee will make a determination. But if they appeal that, then that will come to you at the public session of canvas. Election official conduct. Election official conduct is not a challengeable issue, but observers may make a complaint. So they can either come talk to the municipal clerk and ask a question about conduct, or this also would include, you know, a process or something like that. But if they, they may be asked to submit a written complaint, signed by the candidate, using a form provided. And depending on the issue of the complaint, you know, it may or may not be responded to by the municipal clerk. We had a challenge in one of the recent elections that the, that somebody, one of the election officials who's outside the building on their lunch break was not wearing their luncheon identification. That is not, it is not something we have the time to address. So that would be an example, likely example of something that would just, you know, okay, thank you, put it aside, but, you know, if it's, I saw so-and-so do, you know, putting a ballot into their jacket, you know, well, of course, that's something that would be, that's a terrible example. So, that's sort of the idea behind this complaint procedure.
So Erica, I do see in here it says that the observer is not satisfied with the action of the municipal clerk regarding the complaint. The observer may request that a complaint be brought to the Anchorage Election Commission.
Yes.
So the election commission, which has never, that I know of, received a complaint, I mean, since I've been on board. So it's brought to the election commission for...
You can decide to, so, so remember, your standard is, can you pull up my section of code? Your standard at the public session of canvas is determining that if the election commission or the clerk reports a failure to comply with the provisions of law or illegal election practices, and that such failure is sufficient to change the outcome of the election, then you would be reporting that to the commission.
Okay, I wanted to know if there was some sort of guidance, if something else said it.
You would have...
But that does give us some guidance as to how to take a look at it.
Right, I'm sorry, there wasn't guidance written in here, but yeah.
Yeah, right, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because when I saw it was referred to us, I'm thinking, what are we doing with it? But that makes, thank you for reading that.
So yeah, I think you evaluate whether or not this was a failure of law, or whatever that other...
For the outcome of the election.
Yes.
Okay, thank you Erica.
Thank you. Okay, and then, Madam?
Cindy, go ahead, you have a question?
Right, before we get off on, we're off of page sixteen, because I don't know if we're gonna go any further or not. I had, I should have brought it up before, but there's only one instance in these challenges where it actually clarifies that the complaint or the observation is gonna be brought to the commission at the public session of canvas. I think that that should be duplicated in any place where it's referenced, that it's gonna be brought up to the election commission. Otherwise, it suggests to me that we would be acting on it immediately. So, are you following me?
I am, and I think there was someplace earlier, if I'm not mistaken, that mentioned that if a complaint is not resolved by the municipal clerk, that it would be forwarded to the election commission, is that in there Erica?
I think what Cindy is suggesting is that...
Yeah, I think on each of them...
Cindy, if I may?
On each of the challenges.
Four C on the bottom of page thirteen. She's just suggesting that we add that it will go to the election commission at the public session of canvas. And that would also be added in four C on page fifteen at the top, that it would be appealed to the election commission at the public session of canvas. So I think our good...
Right, I think, yeah, yeah, exactly, and I think that's true on any of the outlined challenges that you have in this document, with the exception of the last one where it actually goes into the very specific, it's gonna be at the public session of canvas. So I think any place where that, so there's a couple, there's, I think in each one of the challenges, it says that.
Okay, I think that's a good point, is there any comment from commissioners? Looks like everyone's in agreement with that, kinda shaking their heads. I always tell my granddaughter, I can't cure you, when she's on the phone, or, you know, just shaking her head, so I, thank you. All right, go ahead, Claire Erica, thank you Cindy.
So, manager, starting on page seventeen through the end is just an overview of the election process. It's a general overview, like I say in the introduction. It's not intended to address every possible circumstance that may be encountered. In the event of a conflict, the law or procedure is controlling. It may refresh, but does not replace observer training, which is more detailed. So, most of the language in this section, the rest of this section is taken directly out of code. Or, you know, you'll see there's the reject codes that you use. So, I don't know if it's a good use of your time for me to walk through this with you.
I think we're all familiar with the reject code and, and the election process. How do the commissioners feel on this? I don't feel we need to go through the rest of this, it was more changes to the observer section. So, comments? Elaine, are you okay with stopping at this point? Pat? Pat, you're okay? Juanis, you're okay? Cindy, are you okay with that?
I am okay with that, and then when we're done with that, I just have one overall comment on the observer manual and, and training.
Okay, all right. So Erica, it looks like we're all in agreement that we're not gonna go through the rest of it. It seems pretty stuff that we've already known. So, if we're done with that, was this the last thing that we were gonna look at, was the observer manual? It was?
Yes.
Okay, well Cindy, it looks like we're done with the observer manual, that was the last item on our agenda. So, if you have a general comment, go ahead.
Yes, I think it's great, I love the whole idea of the observer manual. I would love to have all the commissioners have a copy of that in their manuals when we get them. And then the only other thing I would suggest is, has there been a consideration of having any of the election officials who would be interacting with observers to either participate in that training, or to have a heads-up on any possibilities of challenges, or how things would be dealt with for them at any of the voter centers?
Go ahead Erica.
I, I don't think we've reached the point where we've started planning the training, because we don't yet have these documents adopted by the assembly, but I think those are some really good ideas, and we can certainly talk about incorporating those when we get to the point, that point.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? And I agree with you too Erica, it's always important for those election officials to have the information on how to deal with a challenge. Okay, right now, what we're going to do is we are going to take a ten-minute recess, so Erica can type up our recommended changes, and we'll have a resolution that we will present to the assembly at that point. So we're gonna take a ten-minute recess. Yes. Are those Bieber?
Oh yeah, there are probably some that I got.
Wanna wear this?
I have those too.
I have, I think they're from Meyer.
Those are cute.
On sale.
Oh gosh, no wonder you want... Yes. Those are really... Nice. My nineteen-year-granddaughter has a pair, whatever you call them, and she swears. She just loves them, and she, she wears them all year. I mean, unless it's deep snow, but she'll wear them. She just says they're the best thing. I like them. Just wanting to blow a wave. I fell down and killed her. I was, I was throwing my weight around, actually, no, I was throwing down and throwing something like that. I wanna push you down, but I don't want, I don't wanna hit my foot, so...
Madam Chair, I'd just like to state that I did, I have passed out a first draft of a resolution for you, and I did email that to Cindy Hoffman, Cindy was on the telephone.
Okay, great, thank you, I was just gonna ask that. Okay, the commission was on a ten-minute break, we are now back to order. It is twelve, looks like twelve nineteen. So what Erica has done is the suggested changes that we have, we have, she has put together a resolution. The first one is on page five to reorganize that section twenty-eight fifty-three hundred B into two sections, which we talked about to make it easier to read. I'm sorry, go ahead Erica.
I apologize, Madam Chair, I did add a new number one relating to the issue of defining count, or at least defining it in a negative way, as more of a request that it be looked at rather than a recommended amendment, so I wanted to make sure you...
I didn't catch that, thank you.
That you didn't miss that.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I jumped into number two. Number one, request that the municipal clerk and municipal attorney consider stating in the definition section that count does not mean... the definition section that count does not mean calculated in order to provide additional clarification for the public between the two words. I let them decide in addition. Okay. All right, so then we went to 2A where we were going to reorganize those two sections relating to polling locations of vote centers and then the second relating to designated return location, we talked about that. On page eight, we revise 2850-300E-H, and I know you say to correct language in that section, but I think we should just say delete or on the ballot envelopes. I think that would be a better way to state that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm concerned that maybe I made a script errors or that there was some concept that we were trying to express that I missed some words about, so if possible, I'd like to leave that a little bit more generic so that if there's words that I accidentally deleted that make that more clear, that the, let me find that section, so we'll see if it reads.
Okay, so Erica.
So instead of the Commission saying you should delete this, that's leaving it so that we should make it read properly because it may be that the brief questions relate to something on the envelope.
I see. Okay, what does the Commission feel about going with the suggested language for our resolution for 2B?
To correct confusing language, to...
Give me a second to think, Erica.
Now, what's going on then?
Go ahead.
Sorry, Cindy, but we first took the drop boxes, took looking them today and they are just ringing back them ballots, so they'll be done just in a minute.
Okay, I wonder what was going on because we can't hear with the doors and the noise.
Yeah, I can't hear.
So Cindy, if you could just wait a second, they should be done in a second, we can contemplate about 2B.
Okay.
Maybe instead of word correct, we could say to review language in that section, I kind of like that better. Trying to think of a different word there, so I think review would be good. We could say to review language to... To clarify that section.
And make clarifying corrections.
Yes, why don't we say to review language and make clarifying corrections. Okay, so let me, Cindy, just a second, then we'll let you go ahead. So what I'm recommending on 2B would be on page eight, revise 2850-300E-H to review language and make clarifying corrections in that section. Okay, Cindy, did you have a comment?
Okay. That sounds good.
Oh, okay, all right. I didn't like correct language because I just, I didn't quite catch it. Okay, so we've got that one. 2C on page nine in section 2870-010A, delete for later counting of its closed ballot and add ballot before envelopes on line eight, and that's exactly what we, what we suggested, so I think that sounds good. I don't see anything there, any comment from commissioners? Okay. In the Observer's Handbook on pages 13 and 15, add that appeals to the Election Commission will be addressed at the public session of campus. Okay. Or could we? Let me think about that one for just a sec. Comments from commissioners?
On that specific one, Joyce, or?
Yeah, on 2D, since you're the one that brought it up, Cindy, do you have any comments on that?
Just give me a sec.
Okay.
Okay, down to that section.
Okay, while Cindy's thinking, here would be my suggestion. On page nine in section 2070-010A, oh, I'm sorry, wrong line. In the Observer's Handbook on pages 13 and 15, add a section addressing appeals to the Election Commission at the public session of campus. So we're actually adding a section to the section. Is that how we want to do that, or?
The section's already there. I think my understanding of what Cindy had said, and so if I'm correct and if I'm wrong, is that, so the fourth type of challenge, which is challenge of adjudication of vote, has a statement that says the observer is dissatisfied with the municipal clerk's determination, they can submit to appeal to the Anchorage Election Commission at the public session of campus. But if you look at the challenge, that ballot was not properly cast or ballot was improperly rejected on page 15, C at the top, it says the candidate may appeal the municipal clerk's response to the Anchorage Election Commission by filing, refiling a validity of challenge. It doesn't say may appeal the municipal clerk's response to the Anchorage Election Commission at the public session of campus.
Okay, okay.
And the same issue on the bottom of page 13 for challenges of voter eligibility.
Right.
So the section about appeal is already there, it's just not consistent in that the appeal comes to the commission at the public session of campus. And my understanding of what Cindy suggested, which I think was a really good addition, is that that be made consistent, that, you know, it's not the Election Commission's just going to spring in one day when we get that appeal, that it, those things will be addressed at the public session of campus.
All right, makes sense. Does everyone agree with that? Okay. All right. So basically, we've covered my notes here, because Erica wanted me to keep notes as well, so we've got the counting one and then we've got the three in the code and the one in the Observer's Handbook are the ones that I had written down. Does anybody else have any, any notes from any suggested changes? Okay.
No.
Thank you, it's final changes. Erica's going to make the change that was recommended on 2B, so we'll just sit here for a second or two and wait for her to come out. And what am I sent to Cindy, too? Okay, thank you.
Yep, I have it.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Okay, so we have made the suggested changes, or not we, Erica, thank you, Erica, has made the suggested changes. Are there any other comments regarding the resolution? Okay, I think we've done our due diligence, so if there is a motion to approve the resolution 2021-1 as presented, that would be appreciated.
Sure.
Okay, Pat moves. Glenn, a second. Okay, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 None.
All those opposed? Cindy, you said aye, right?
I did say aye.
Okay, thank you. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries and the resolution is passed. Okay, we have a couple of things left on our agenda. We have member comments and public comments, so let's go to member comments. Are there any members who want to comment during this time?
I have one.
Okay, go ahead, Cindy.
I just wanted to thank the Commission members of the work that Erica does. I know it's the job, but I appreciate all of the quality input that we always get and I think the further refining we can do to help the election process is great and today was a good example of that.
Thank you, Cindy. Pat, do you have some comments, if you could pick up the microphone?
I would just agree with what she said.
Okay, Pat says she agrees with what Cindy said. Any other comments? Go ahead, Glenn.
I don't think it was what Cindy said, I don't think so.
Okay, Glenn, and Doris, it'll head. Elaine, too. I do as well. I would like to say that I think, Erica, you have done a wonderful job and your knowledge of what's not only here but in the code and in the Observer's Handbook and your knowledge of the election process is just great. I think that you are a real asset to the elections, or clerk's office, I should say, so thank you again for that. I also would like to thank the commissioners for their input. I don't want to apologize for speaking a lot, but I do want to say that since elections and you all know, this is my background, I get a little picky and then I work with a lot of coordinates and, or I mean statutory language, so anyway, I think we did a good job. I think we did some clarification, as Cindy said, that's going to be helpful, so I want to thank all the commissioners for their time and input on this. And if, any other comments from commissioners? Okay, I think we will then go to public comments.
Can I approach the table? Commissioner approach the table. Thank you. Hello, can you hear me okay? I'll set my timer. My name is Eugene Paul Haverman, represent myself, follow the public process. When the public process done appropriately, decision made by the governing body is more likely public interest. First, I'd like to talk about, and you may not be aware, but I have been addressing this special committee of the Assembly, when there was the meeting, calling, saying a date for, we called ten members out of town. There was at that meeting Barbara Jones noted concern about what date she was, they were going to approve because this municipality of Anchorage is involved with other local elections. They're involved with the city of Juneau. This is not the first year, it's the second. Where in America does any local community take the responsibility from them being involved in the election and move it over to another community in this county of Anchorage? That's what's happened. The responsibility of the municipal clerk is to be involved with municipality of Anchorage for elections, for local elections, not a state election, local elections. And what's happened here, and concern about around America, is concern about how elections are run. And I have been addressing this semi on two occasions in the past few months, raising the concern. Administration wasn't in the dark about this thing. And when, and I asked this question, who authorized municipality of Anchorage to be involved in handling another election? That election is, by the way, the city of Juneau, our state capital. Now, by the way, yesterday was the Assembly Ethics Election Committee meeting. The week before, they had one too. But what is the first, my knowledge, you know, monitored elections meetings for years, they held a work session yesterday, so I couldn't bring up that issue. That's the kind of situation. But I did address the Alaska Public Offices Commission, the public comment yesterday, and they said, and one member said to me, did you take it to the State Division of Elections? And I said to them, the State Division of Elections' role is involved with state elections. The role of local city elections to be involved with their own elections, not the state. So what we have here is a serious matter. And once this gets out to the extent of people realizing it's happening in Anchorage, in America, what kind of reaction are we going to receive and other people are going to have trust in how elections are run? Now, I'll close with this. You've just passed a resolution, briefly, I'll say, and to go to the Assembly. I don't question your right at all to propose and review, but nowhere in this meeting did you ask the public of their say on this. And state law requires to have a, provide a reasonable opportunity for public heard and there was no, there was no opportunity of any member of the public to review your proposals, review the documents, and you went ahead and this goes to the Assembly. And this is more of the same. This is really serious. And I'll stress this. It's, I came back, and I'll just leave with this comment here, I came back in the picture of reviewing Anchorage elections because of 2012 where more than 40% of poll entries ran out of ballots even though printout. That's brought me back in attention and I have not left the scene since. And what I reported in my words to you this afternoon, look what chapter we're in as running elections. The focus of the municipal clerk and the city as well as election is to be involved with local elections. And think about those people in Juneau and their rights and their need to be close to handling of those ballots. It's moved to Anchorage in this room. Enough, Cindy, it's got to stop. Thank you and thank you for the time, with all due respect.
Thank you. I think we are at the point in our meeting where we have hit every item on the agenda and we are now ready for adjournment, so is there a motion to adjourn? Elaine, so moves to adjourn. Do we need a second to adjourn? Erica, I didn't think so. Okay, the meeting is adjourned and it is 12:39.